Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Warrenville Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the Hall regular meeting. It is Monday, December 9th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format. And for your convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually on the official YouTube channel. Public comment will only be available in person during the meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. So, Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos is absent. Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, would you all please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Citizens' comments. I don't have any listing here, but if there's anyone who would like to make a comment during the meeting, please let me know when we get to the item that you're interested in speaking about. Now, on to official and staff comments. Mayor Brummel?
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, if you haven't been to the downtown area, come on down at night. It is fabulous. Our staff did a terrific job of decorating this year. They do a great job every year, but it seems like it gets better every year. It's just so colorful and festive and nice. So, thank you for making the extra effort to make it look so nice. Holidays was a huge success, and everyone got to enjoy the downtown, a nice crowd and some nice entertainment. And the Merry Market, our first Merry Market here at City Hall, for my lights, was very successful. I came in twice during the evening, and both times, the place was packed. Lots of folks in here, lots of vendors. It looked like everybody was enjoying, and hopefully the vendors sold some of their wares and are going to want to come back next year, but it seemed very, very successful, though. So, thanks to the Park District and everyone who had anything to do with the festive spirit that we have in our downtown. It's very enjoyable.
Thank you. Alderman, comments? I would also like to say that I like the decorations or the lights over by Leon Schmidt Park. I think that's the first time that might have been done. So, it looks very nice over there, especially when you come over the bridge and you see them. It's very nice. So, thank you to Public Works. Let's see. Administrator?
Okay.
Okay, and Clerk? Okay. Now, on to the business of the meeting. Our first item is consideration of updated authorization strength ordinance. And this will be presented by Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery.
Thank you. Included in your agenda backup materials this evening is a revised schedule of job classifications and authorized strength ordinance. Community Development is proposing five changes that will result in an overall decrease of the city's workforce by a half of an employee. The changes that we're proposing are aligned with our comparable communities, which will keep us competitive in the marketplace as we're looking to fill positions now and going forward. It will maximize the resources we have available to serve the community, particularly as we look to implement the new strategic plan that's in place. It will take advantage of our new enterprise software, which we expect to go live next summer, and create the capacity that we need to provide proactive economic development, inviting new investment in the community and supporting the businesses that we have here today. The changes include a customer service specialist position, rather, that will be shared between the Finance Department and the Community Development Department. This will further the collaboration between our two departments and help us to provide efficient means of getting agenda and meeting preparation materials together. The Assistant Community Development Director focus will change to an engineering skill set from a planning skill set. And we will create a new position of an economic development specialist, proposed to serve the community in a variety of ways, from grant administration to RFP responses and assistance with TIF reporting and so much more. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, any comments or questions? Nothing? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass an ordinance establishing a revised schedule of job classifications and authorized strength.
Second? We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Number two, consideration of OTRS number two, covenants, conditions, easement, and restriction agreement. This is presented by Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking.
Hello, and thank you, and welcome. In February of 2024, City Council passed an ordinance approving an agreement with JC Holdings, owner of Otels Auto Service, documenting the rights and responsibilities of the property exchange, the construction of the drive aisle, rooming fences, et cetera. We discussed this at the Community Development, the November Community Development meeting. At that time, the Otels had reviewed the easement agreement that you see in the agenda backup materials, and they had, at that time, requested a sharing of four access spaces. At that time, City Council decided not to recommend moving forth with that change in the agreement. So, the agreement as presented tonight is all of the items that were included as part of that original agreement with the property owner back in February 2024. This documents a shared drive aisle only between the two properties, as well as documents the rights and responsibilities regarding maintenance, shared costs regarding maintenance of that drive aisle, as well as a few documented items that will occur post-closing after the land property exchange, which includes the requirement for the Otels to install a fence along the west property line and also remove the remaining sheds on the north side of their property once a foundation is being poured on the OTRS number two site. In the backup materials is the actual agreement signed by the Otels. They had their attorney review the agreement, and they acknowledged and signed it, and that is included in the backup materials. I will take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay, anyone? Alderman Lockett, please.
Is this all we have left with them with regards to paperwork?
So, in terms of paperwork, yes. This is all we have within the next steps regarding the actual property would be then. We have to wait, we're waiting for one NFR letter related to the lust remediation. After we obtain that, then we can go through the post-closing with that. So, the closing would include them as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I do have one question. You can refresh my memory. I know you said the drive next to their property. Now, there's parking then to the west of that. Now, is that included in this?
So, this agreement is the one that will stay in perpetuity?
Right.
And that only includes the drive aisle. The parking spots on the west side of that aisle will remain the city's, and then eventually the future owners of that lot. The parking spaces on the east side will remain the Otels, just for them. So, that's, this is the document that stays in perpetuity.
And the whole area behind their property is theirs?
Correct. Yeah, there is the platte subdivision that was approved by the Plan Commission last week. That will be, that was approved for recommendation. That will be on the City Council's agenda on Monday for final approval. The ordinance will include this agreement as well, but that documents the location of that easement.
Thank you. Mayor Brummel?
Just one question, Christine, on the fence and the removal of the sheds. Do we have any kind of a bond or anything? What if this doesn't take place for the foundation? First one is not laid for five or seven or 10 years, and things have changed with Otels, and they've retired or whatever. How do we get that fence put up? Is there some way to ensure that that's going to happen in the future?
Regarding this actual agreement, there's things that the city attorney could, city could possibly do regards to that. That, it is part of the agreement. In terms of the sheds, if the foundations don't go in, yes, that is something that the city could pursue in the future because the sheds are actually on city, partially on city property. So, I guess there is the potential in the future if foundations don't get built within the next, you know, certain amount of years, the city could pursue that route. The city has not done that to this point.
Okay. My concern would be maybe either they sell the business or they close down the business.
This agreement stays with the property owner. So, it doesn't matter if it's the Otels or another property owner on that. This agreement is for the accessors assigned, successors and assigners after the property is sold.
Okay, so it needs to be met?
Yes, by the other, yeah, the future property owner, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Kruckenberg?
No, no more comments. I just wanted to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass an ordinance approving an agreement between the city and JC Holdings.
Second? We have a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Number three, informational update on the Viewworks implementation. And this is, oh my God. Hmm? Asset analyst. Cassandra? Oh my God, I couldn't remember your first name. I am so sorry. I got your last name, but I couldn't remember your first name.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, tonight I'll be giving City Council an update on Viewworks, the city's EAM software. Public Works has been utilizing Viewworks for the past eight months. They've adapted to the software, and they are also proactively reaching out, asking questions when they need help. Overall, they've done a fantastic, we've all done a fantastic job. Staff wants to note that the first year, data won't be the best, but as staff continues to learn the software and become more efficient within the system, we will have better data. We are effectively integrating Viewworks into our daily operations. So, basically, any job that staff is going out to conduct, a work order is being submitted. And with that work order, we're tracking time, staff time, equipment cost, inventory, to give us the bigger picture of what it, what it costs to get jobs done throughout the town. So, several highlights that I want to inform City Council on is, overall, Viewworks as a system, Viewworks support has been very supportive and responsive with city staff. Judy from Bay Core Group actually did a phenomenal job and set us up for success. She gave us direct contact information for individuals in Viewworks, and I have personally contacted them, communicated with them, and they have so far been very responsive in helping us out with all our issues or questions that we have. Staff has actually started using the advanced modules that are in Viewworks, one being the projects module. So, in your backup material, I provided a report which is that we effectively tracked the tree planting efforts so far for FY25. That tracking was all staff time, again, equipment and inventory cost to date. This report is just the beginning. So, as we continue to get more data, we'll be able to report more and figure out what kind of reporting we want. So, in this case, this report has, like, tree inspections, planting, stump grinding, mulching, et cetera. And then it also gives you the grand total for each category, and then the grand total at the end of what we've spent so far, or what would be city costs, I should say, for these specific jobs. And then, as we, again, as we continue to develop, our reports will also develop, providing more, you know, background information of how staff does certain jobs and ultimately help us make data-driven decisions in the future. Along with that, staff has also proactively been communicating with other municipalities that use Viewworks as well, and we are happy to see that we are actually using Viewworks. I don't want to say a lot more, but we're more advanced in the modules that we're using compared to other municipalities who've been using Viewworks longer than us. So, that's a big, you know, A-plus. And then, also, staff is proud to report that the city received the 2024 Viewworks Implementation of the Year, and this success is partly due to the software implementation led by Bay Core Group, which we were able to complete within budget and on time and the great commitment of the Public Works team. So, with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on that.
Thank you. We have the award right here.
Great. It's, it's very important to see because you have a lot of people in Public Works, and if, if they didn't all accept this, the team didn't, then this, you would have never received this. So, congratulations to everyone in Public Works for making this a group effort and winning this award. It's great. It's great. It's great to see that everybody has accepted it and is using it. So, thank you. Alderman, any comments, questions? Alderman Lockett?
First of all, congratulations. That's fantastic, and you hit the nail on the head, data-driven decisions. And I think to look at these numbers and see these things is really only going to help us moving forward. So, the hardest year in the anticipation, right? You just, you as data, right? You want years of it. We got to start somewhere, and we'll get there, right? The question I had, inventory costs, what's included in that?
So, for this one, the report that I pulled, inventory cost was like the tree. So, for the tree planting, it was the tree, if there was any mulch. They also installed tree diapers with the trees. So, it's all those costs that it would have been if, you know, we had a contractor do it, they'd be charging us all the supplies that they use.
Okay, great. And then for, do we, will we eventually have the availability, or maybe you already do, to kind of drill down on like labor costs? And like, I'm assuming maybe you click this, and it goes down, and it tells you three hours of this guy, two hours of that? Is that kind of how it works more?
Yeah, I'm able to get down into the weeds of each report. We don't have like a mass report that will have all those numbers, but for example, labor, I did pull the report, and it was just very, very long to sum up the totals. And for just the FY25 tree planting with all these work orders, it was 106.5 hours of staff time. And that number will continue to grow because we are still going in FY25, and we still have tree trimming and pruning that will happen in the winter.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's great to know that we have that availability to go all the way down to the bottom if we need to.
Yes.
But it's great to see the summary. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, that is for information purposes only, and thank you again for doing a great job. Okay, number four, consideration of Bay Core change order for the ERP project management. This will be presented by Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Thank you, and good evening. Bay Core Group has been assisting the city with its various software implementation projects. The total value of their contracts and amendments to date, this is, and this isn't what we've spent so far, but this is what they're contracted to do, is approximately $692,000. Their services include, have included so far, the assessment and selection of the various software pieces that we're implementing, and also the helping us select a new IT consultant as well as a new GIS consultant. Additionally, they've been providing pre-work and implementation project management services for the city for the various pieces of software. Cassandra just talked about the Viewworks software and that project. Bay Core recently submitted a $79,640 change order for work associated with just the ERP project. That's a enterprise resource planning project that is, the software is BSNA. The change order, half of it is for work that's been done to date. They perform additional pre-work as they were working through with finance and community development on some of the data cleanup and some of the formatting and kind of setting up our, what we're looking for in the system and our desired state with the system. And that pre-work will go a long way toward helping the ERP project be more efficiently implemented. There is other half of the change orders for work that hasn't occurred yet. Due to BSNA's scheduling, it pushed the, it pushed the project one quarter, three months farther in terms of length. So, there's some extra work there for Bay Core that was beyond the city and Bay Core's control. And then the city, as we were working with Bay Core in the pre-work, we determined that with, there's two really critical parts of the implementation. One is some of the data review and data validation and making sure that's right. So, there was an example that Bay Core has used where, in another community, when they implemented the utility billing portion of it, you know, Alma was getting my bill, I was getting Cassandra's bill, just because they were, they just checked the bottom line, and the numbers in the bottom line totals matched up, but they didn't look carefully enough with the data to make sure that all of it was associated with the right record. And so, that's going to be a really important thing to do in going through the utility billing and also some of the community development data to make sure it's all correct, and that happens in January. And then later, just before we go live in the spring, there's an end-to-end process testing where we're testing all the processes. And Amy, in a, probably in another month or so here, is going to be talking to you about the, all the work that they're going to have to do related to that and some of the impacts that's going to have to services from community development, but that's detailed for each, you know, all the finance processes, all the community development processes. Even Public Works has a right-of-way permitting process with a spreadsheet that's like 120 different tests we have to run on that to make sure it works once the software is ready to go. So, at that time, because that's so critical to make sure that the software functions properly, we, between that and the data validation, we need, we, staff requested that Bay Core be more involved in those two things and helping lead staff to check that information before we get to the point where we are able to sign off on the software with BSNA. So, ultimately, also in my memo that's included with the agenda backup materials, there's a large table of costs with all the software projects and consulting costs. I had previously provided that, I think about a year or so ago, when we made the selections with the different pieces of software. The difference between the total cost and the updated costs and the original ones are about $106,000, which nearly $80,000 of that is this change order, of course. And then the remaining $27,000, I think, was based on, at the time, with some of the Granicus, the third piece that we didn't have contracts on yet, we had estimated costs, and since then, we've actually got contracted costs with them. So, I think that's where that difference in $27,000 comes from. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the change order.
Thank you. Alderman, comments, questions? Alderman Lockett?
Just so I understand, this change order, the $39,820, right? But wasn't the CGS contract $30,000 less than what we had originally anticipated?
Yes. So, the, in the original, in my original memo, we were projecting ahead because we didn't know what we'd require from CGS. Their services for this current fiscal year are $30,000 less than we had projected. And then going forward, I don't know. Our goal with each one of these, and there will be a decision package for next year's services with them, our goal is going to be to minimize, to the extent that we can, the amount that we need them. I think next year is still going to be a big year for CGS in terms of our needs for them with the software implementations, because we get past that, and we get all these integrations done, and the GIS is up to snuff, we're hoping to use them less and less.
Right. And having Bay Core stay on, you know, for that three months while we were waiting, just to kind of do the front end, the cleanup, in your opinion, completely worth it?
Yes, definitely worth it. And community development and finance both spent hours and hours working with them to, and all their different processes and documenting all that stuff, which is really going to be important as they move into, community development's already completed their discovery sessions where they first had their initial meetings with BSNA, finances wrapping theirs up, and getting, getting all that information to BSNA in the form that they're looking for is really important, because otherwise, they'd have to be working on that right now while they're in the midst of trying to develop budget and everything like that.
It's always nice to ask a question, and you see all the heads shaking. You know what I mean? So, it just kind of, you know, makes it like real that it was great to do. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we just need a motion. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving addendum number four to the professional services agreement with Bay Core Group, Inc.
Second? We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Number five, consideration of disposal of surplus personal property. This would be the Capitol Maintenance Superintendent Jamie Clark.
Good evening, everybody. Staff has identified four pieces of equipment in one vehicle that are no longer being utilized by the Public Works Department. The equipment, each of those pieces of equipment is 25 to 30 years of age, and the dump truck with the snowplow is over 20 years of age. We, most importantly, we're no longer using these pieces of equipment. I would like the committee to recommend to the City Council to pass an ordinance approving the disposal of personal property owned by the city of Warrenville. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Okay, I guess we would need a motion then. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend City Council pass an order, ordinance to approve the disposal of personal property owned by the city of Warrenville.
Second? I think that was Alderman Widener? Did you? Oh, you didn't? Was it Alderman Wilkie? I'm sorry.
It was a W.
With a W, okay. We have a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. This could be flavorful. Flavorful, yes. Number six, consideration of purchase of well filter. This is presented by Utility Maintenance Superintendent Zach Jardine.
Welcome. Thank you. The city of Warrenville operates four active wells that utilize pressure filters to remove the iron and manganese from the drinking water. Each year, we submit these samples to Filtronics, which is the manufacturer of the media itself for evaluation. The last results that we got, three of the wells, indicates that they're a little low on media. So, we're asking for additional media to effectively help eliminate the iron and manganese process out of these wells. So, this was budgeted in FY25 budget, so there is sufficient funds there. The only other impact for resources would be that it's going to take man-hours for us to add the media in. So, it's recommended that the City Council pass a resolution approving the purchase of the filter media for wells nine, 10, and 11 in the amount of $27,319.55. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you. I do have a question. So, media is what?
There's four different.
I'm assuming it's the material that the water has to flow through to filter?
Yeah, there's actual sand, there's stone, there's a, what's that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so there's different layers of, of material that's in there. There's a media that reacts with iron and manganese, which basically makes it insoluble. And so, then it basically, after the well is done running, it does a backwash. And when it does this backwash cycle, some of that filter media does go down into the sanitary sewer system, and that's actually what creates, over a period of time, where we have to add more.
Oh, so you lose it through the sanitary?
Yes, that is correct. So, a little bit to go. So, that's why we continue to send core samples every year, and then they basically send it back to us and tell us whether we're, we're sufficient or we need to get more.
So, how long typically does this media last?
That typically is based on the amount of use. So, the more that, the more water the city uses on a yearly basis, the more these filters and the pressure filters run. That can also vary based on each well and the amount of iron coming out of that well.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions? Alderman Kruckenberg? Alderman Kruckenberg?
Is there anything that we can do to prevent loss, or is this kind of a normal thing that happens?
It's a normal operating. I mean, it's going to happen, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Does it make sense to get it for all four wells, knowing that we're going to end up using it? And maybe if everything gets shipped together, you save a little bit on the shipping costs and...
The problem with that is, is where do you store it? It has to stay dry in the meantime. And once it gets wet, then you take a chance of it getting mold in it and just being subjected to the elements, I guess.
Okay. And these are readily available, like to ship? They can ship them tomorrow or whatever, once you place the order?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? A motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving the purchase of filter media for wells nine, 10, and 11 in the amount of $27,319.55.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Number seven, let's see, what do we have? Consideration of Engineering Design Contract for River Road Curb and Gutter. This would be Director Kukler.
Thank you again. The jurisdictional transfer of River Road and the section of Warrenville Road from DuPage County to the city was effective as of October 22nd. As part of that IGA that facilitated that transfer, DuPage County will be paying the city $1 million and $30,000 to pay for the design and construction of adding curb and gutter to the west side of River Road. The agreement with the Agenda Backup Materials is for the design and development of bid documents for fiscal year '26 construction of that. And as an aside, Finance Director Dollstrand just issued an invoice to the county within this last week, I think, for that million, $1 million and $30,000, because the county's fiscal year, I think, just started December 1st, and that's, they requested that we wait to invoice them until after the 1st. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, with the design of curb and gutter, is there anything that's ever considered as far as like, you know, that's pretty much a straight shot, and we've talked about the 40 mile an hour speed limit, and I just wonder whether there's any consideration to incorporate traffic calming, either medians or bump outs or things like that to help change the way that that road is laid out and designed?
So we can do that. Currently, we have a separate engineering firm that's looking at the, evaluating the speed limit on River Road. I haven't gotten a report back on that yet as far as what the appropriate speed limit is. I do, my gut feeling is that it's going to be lower than 40. I don't know what, if it's 30 or 35, but I believe it'll be lower than 40. As part of that, we can ask, because right now, ERA is going to get out and do the survey work before the snow flies and start working on that. We can work with the two engineering firms to see if there are improvements we can make. Say if, say the speed limit did come back as 40, we could work on getting recommendations of what we might need to incorporate to encourage people to drive slower.
So that million dollars from the county could cover those kinds of changes to the road and be incorporated at the same time as the curb and gutter being installed, or would it be two separate years or construction phases?
I'd want to do it all at the same time, because as long as they're out there working. I think that because you're adding curb and gutter to the entire west side, I mean, one, I think we're going to be narrowing the road a little bit as part of that. Jamie, we're looking at two 11-foot wide lanes plus the curb and gutter. So right now, the west edge of pavement kind of varies in terms of the width of that, width of that. So we'll be cutting, I anticipate, we saw cutting a little bit of it out and removing it as we install the curb and gutter. So it'll get a little bit narrower, which will help. But yeah, I would, I'd recommend if we, if it does come to that, we'll look at the costs and see what, come and come back to council. If it was going to require anything extra, we definitely want to come back to council and say, here's the, here's the cost to making these changes at the same time to slow traffic down.
Will any of like, I guess, residents have any input into any of the proposed changes or anything like that? I know when we did Warrenville Road, there was a lot of, I think, when we did the bricks and then when we redesigned it, there was a lot of neighborhood input, and I just wondered whether or not we would gather that as we went forward with whatever we're going to end up doing there so that it's...
Yeah, probably, I think there's, I don't think there are that many residents that front that, so it'd probably be a small neighborhood meeting to talk, talk over what we're planning once we have a set of plans in place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Brummel?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that this would be a nice improvement for the residences along the road as it's just kind of a rough gravel at the edge now, and with the curb, we'll get rid of most of the ditches and it'll be nice smoother and it'll be a nice edge to the road. Really should be an improvement visually and practically for the people living along the west side, too. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what our intent is. There'll be a little bit of storm sewer work included in this to help get, at least minimize the ditches, and we're going to try to eliminate them as much as possible, but I assume there will still be some ditches left. But they should be shallower and easier to maintain.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Kruckenberg, you had your hand raised? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Engineering Resource Associates Incorporated for design and engineering services relating to the 2025 River Road Curb and Gutter project.
Second. A motion by Alderman Kruckenberg, a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Number eight, consideration of Engineering Design Contract Amendment for the 2025 Road Program. Again, Director Kukler.
Thank you. This is my last item. Staff recently confirmed with IDOT that the city can use nearly $400,000 of Rebuild Illinois funds that the city has already received from the state. And our intent is to, what we confirmed from IDOT is we're actually able to use that to pay for a part of the 2025 Road Program. The Rebuild Illinois funds are a little bit different than other funding where they make you demonstrate that the pavement will last at least 13 years and it's, they call it bondable. So we went, we had worked with an engineer, actually Engineering Resource Associates to help gather data and provide that report to IDOT so they gave them the ability to confirm we can use that funding in that way. And the reason we can, we have $400,000 of funding to use is, you may recall that at some point, Senior Civil Engineer Hocking had reported that the, we learned that the McRoe Bridge can now be funded 100% by federal funds, and so that freed up some of the Rebuild Illinois bond funding that we'd anticipated using, spending entirely on the McRoe Project. So we, the contract, we contracted with ERA just for the 2025 Road Program to start with, and it was a $22,000 contract that was within staff's spending authority, so we executed a contract with them. Then we learned we could use this funding. In order to use this funding, we have to develop the plans and bid documents up to IDOT requirements for MFT funding, for spending MFT money. So the contract amendment that's included in the Agenda Backup Materials reflects that additional costs to bring the contract documents up to IDOT requirements, which is something that's $14,000. So that pushed the total contract amount above staff's spending authority, which is why we're here tonight to talk about it. In addition to the Rebuild Illinois bond funding, I was talking with Finance Director Dollstrand, and he's going to, I've got to work with him to determine how much MFT funding we have available that we could use toward a project. There's a significant balance that's built up in there, and our intent with the MFT funding was to help supplement the, use that balance to help supplement the CMRP. So this would be a great project since we already have to build, develop bid documents up to IDOT standards to be able to also use MFT money on it, so we're not, we try to gather, accumulate that money so we can just do that in one, one project at a time as opposed to like every year spending that and then having to spend extra money on engineering every year to bring every set of bid documents up to IDOT standards. So we anticipate the project is going to cost about $1.8 million. There's nearly $400,000 will be paid for from Rebuild Illinois bond funds, and then I've got to determine how much, work with Kevin to determine how much MFT money we can use. But I've been anticipating we could potentially pay for two-thirds or three-quarters of the project with MFT and Rebuild Illinois funds. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Comments? Alderman Lockett?
So if we pay the $14,200, we save $400,000?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Anyone else comment or question? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving the first amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Engineering Resource Associates, Inc., for engineering-related services related to the 2025 Road Program.
Second. Motion by Alderman Lockett, a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consideration of increased purchase price of Public Works cab and chassis. Capitol Maintenance Superintendent Jamie Clark.
Thank you. In June of 2022, the City Council approved the purchase of a cabin chassis for an amount of $94,994. The cabin chassis has been built and is now ready for delivery at a price of $97,294. $2,300 more than the City Council approved. We're asking that the committee recommend to the City Council to pass a resolution rescinding Resolution Number R2022-35 in approving the purchase of the cabin chassis. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Alderman Widener?
I'm just curious, has they gave you a reason why the price jumped up $2,300, or whether that's just a standard market?
Two and a half years of price increases. That's, that's the only answer they have. They didn't break it down per, per item as in the pricing of the vehicle, it's just the lump sum at the end change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. A motion? Alderman Widener?
Motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution rescinding Resolution Number R2022-35 in approving the purchase of a cab and chassis for the Public Works dump truck from Rush Truck Center in the amount of $97,294.
Second. A motion by Alderman Widener and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Finally, number 10, review and file Public Works Department FY 2025 Works Program and Decision Package Status Report. This is an FYI. Does anyone have any questions regarding the Public Works Program and Decision Packages? Alderman Lockett?
Keyless entry, is that happening this week? Just so I know, in case I'm not allowed in the building, it doesn't work?
Not this week. Originally, they were talking about it. We're trying to work through making sure we get the IDs printed and everything like that first before they start implementing the actual physical changes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions. We have nothing under miscellaneous, and all we need is one more motion. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure no one is opposed. Okay, we are done. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening, and have a good evening.